To our Village Board of Trustees meeting here on October 13th. If I could ask the clerk to please take the roll call.
Trustee Bachner, here. Trustee Brennan?
Here.
Trustee Cescatello?
Here.
Trustee Gillis?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez? President Adusi?
I think what we're going to do is, next up, we're going to ask if we can recognize, I'm here, by the way.
Yes.
Recognize Rez is on Zoom due to a work obligation. So if I can get a motion in a second to allow trustee Vasquez to join us by Zoom.
Make a motion to allow trustee Vasquez to participate virtually in tonight's meeting due to a work obligation.
Second?
Okay.
All those in a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, welcome trustee Vasquez. Okay, so if I can ask everyone to stand up to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I know we're going to just be waiting for this. Okay, we'll have citizen comments in a minute, so we've got a special presentation by our, basically auditing firm. Thanks. So there's no action here, just a presentation, so I'll let Rosie kick it off. Yep? Go ahead.
The approval is under consent after the presentation.
Right, but no action on this particular one?
No, no, no action here.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to present to you the fiscal year 2025 annual comprehensive financial report. I'm going to briefly discuss a few highlights that are included in my memo that you received, and afterwards Martha Trotter from Sikkage will present the report and give, highlight some beneficial things for you. A summary of the general fund revenues is on page one of my memo. Overall, actual revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by 552,000 or 502, or 2.72%. Some of the revenues that we look at are, so property taxes were higher than budgeted, and a lot of that is due to the timing of receipts. Property taxes include the second installment of the 2023 levy and the first installment of the 2024 levy. We don't know the impact, we'll see what the impact of the reassessment will be on this second installment of 2024. State income tax revenues receipts were slightly above the budgeted amount, and this revenue source continues to exceed projections. Each year, we budget a little bit more based on the economy and what we're seeing in the, in going on. One keynote is use taxes have been declining, and we've been seeing that over the last few months, and this is due to the way the revenue source is being allocated. Prior to January 1st, 2025, this was distributed per capita, but this was changed on January 1st, 2025. It's now based on the jurisdiction of where the item is shipped from or delivered. As we see these declines in use taxes, we see the opposite effect in sales tax and non-home rule tax, which these continue to increase. This also is increased by inflation and the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. These revenues are based on consumer spending and the cost of goods and services. Now, if you, in my memo, if you look on page two of my memo, there's the expenditures per department, and general fund expenditures are slightly below the budgeted amount for the fiscal year in total. Detailed expenditures can be found in the actual annual report on page 92. Now, that gives you a breakout of each individual expense per department, so you can take a closer dive into that if you need to. Just some highlights of the general fund expenditures. Administration expenditures are above the budget due partly to, due to our liability deductible in fiscal year 2025. I don't know if you recall, some of you weren't on the board back in, I think, 2018, we increased our deductible to, from five, I think it was either 2,500 or 5,000, but we increased it to 25,000. So we pay that deductible on any claims we have up to 25,000 now. But that saves us, should save us, on our actual liability insurance per year. E-911 expenditures are up also. That's because of West Bourbon Consolidated Dispatch Center contribution has increased due to rising operational costs and equipment purchases. Most of the other departments expenditures were either lower than the budgeted or in line with what we had, had predicted, had budgeted for. Contributions to the police and fire pension funds are less than what the budgeted amount is in the budget, but that is because the budgeted amount is what we levy. We make an, a tax, we make an amendment to the budget to make sure that the amount we budget is what was levied, and because of how collections are, we may, we won't see that actual amount in the year we, we budget for it. Like I said before, that's the second installment of the 2023 and the first installment of 2024 levy. So then, in the chart on page three, shows the total revenues and expenditures for the general fund and the impact on fund balance. Important things to notice on this chart and take into consideration are that our fund balance overall increased by 285,370 for the fiscal year. Our village policy on fund balance requires that the unassigned fund balance plus the amount restricted for, for working cash be at least 25% of the subsequent, subsequent year's budget, expenditures, budgeted expenditures. If you look on the chart, you'll see that we increased from 44.2% last year up to 45% of fund reserves. So that's a really, really healthy fund reserve balance that we have going into next year's budget preparation. That will work really hard to continue keeping that as is. The assigned balance, as you see, might, has increased a bit, but that's the insurance and that's, it's, that's assigned to insurance. It's actually our reserve balances in Irma, which is our public risk pool. So it's, it's funds that are reserved for any, any major catastrophes that we, we ever would have to pay for. So that's, it's, it's a good thing to have. Now, let's, we can look at a little bit of the water and sewer fund highlights. Since this is our only enterprise fund, it's good to keep an eye on that and know what future projects we may or may not be able to do. So the water sewer fund net position increased by 894,188. The water and sewer revenues were slightly below budget, but that's due to build water consumption and weather conditions. If, if, you know, we have rainy, we didn't have a really, this year, you might see it, water consumption up more because we had a pretty dry summer. Rates were increased by 0.81% on June 1st, 2024, and that was to offset a 3.3% increase in the cost of water from the city of Chicago. There was no village implemented rate increase to help fund future operating capital improvements. So that's basically the, the major funds. Martha will give a better, clearer picture of the actual report, but I encourage you all to read the transmittal letter and the manager, management's, the MDNA, which is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is located in the beginning of the book, beginning of the report. The annual report includes a great deal of information. These documents provide a description of the financial statements and summarize and explain the village's financial activities during the fiscal year. This report and the results of this report are the result of a well-functioning team that admirably weathered fiscal challenges each year. Staff's diligence, diligence in maintaining the accounting records and careful and conscientious attention on all levels of village management and operational staff made this possible. Thanks to Matt Walsh for his leadership and Kiki Boyer and the finance team for all their hard work. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Martha Trotter from Sikkage, and she will go over the very exciting report.
Good evening, thank you. Thanks, Rosie. I am Martha Trotter. I'm the lead principal on the village's audit engagement, and I will be presenting to you hopefully briefly the results of the fiscal year April 30, 2025 audit. As part of the audit process, we have issued the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the largest of the documents that you've received for review. We've also issued the board communication packet, and due to requirements by Illinois state statutes, as well as auditing requirements and reporting requirements, there have been, issued the management letter in accordance with Illinois compiled statutes, the TIF examination report, as well as the IMRF allocation report, which presents the allocation of the village's net pension liability allocated between the, the village and library, so the proportionate shares of that liability balance. I'll be focusing on the annual comprehensive financial report, as well as briefly touch on the board communication. First, I wanted to point out within the annual comprehensive financial report, the village does prepare a full annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFOR as we refer to it. This is above and beyond what is required by state statutes and complies with the requirements of the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement Program. So there are some additional reporting sections within the report prepared by the village in order to meet these additional requirements and to be able to file annually the application for the certificate, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And the village did, was awarded this distinguished honor for the previous year's ACFOR, which is presented on page Roman numeral four within the ACFOR. And the current report, which we are reviewing, we do anticipate the village will be filing the submission for this distinct, distinguished honor, and we do anticipate it to be awarded once again, which lets you know that this document is presented not just with required reporting under GAAP and GASB, but also meets the additional requirements and the preparation of the introductory section and statistical section, which is included in this report. That does provide, take a great deal of effort to prepare, as well as provides a great deal of additional information for whoever is reading the financial statements. The independent auditors' report is listed on pages one through four of the ACFOR, and this is where you'll find our company's opinion on these audited financial statements. I am pleased to report a clean, unmodified opinion on the village's financial statements for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2025. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide with respect to the accuracy and fairness of presentation of the village's financial position and its conformity with GAAP. Our audit procedures were conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and in order to be able to complete our audit testing and our procedures and to provide this clean opinion, there is a lot of information that we do request of the village, and it does take a lot of preparation and effort and organization in order to, not only for us to be able to complete our testing are required based on auditing standards, but also to issue this clean opinion and to provide the report on a timely basis within the six month requirement, as stated by Illinois compiled statutes. So I do want to extend our team's gratitude and appreciation for all the effort that goes into preparation for the audit and responding to all of our numerous inquiries and not only professionally, but accurately and with all the information that is requested without a lot of follow-up that allows us to issue the reports timely. So I want to extend our team's appreciation for all of that effort that goes into this, in addition to obviously the day-to-day operations that must continue to be completed. I want to point out in the independent auditors' report on the first, on page one of the ACFOR, there's an additional section at the bottom of the, of that first page that describes changes in accounting principles. So for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2025, there was an implementation of a new accounting, auditing, accounting standard, reporting of compensated absences, referred to as GASB statement number 101. What that resulted in was a restatement to the beginning balances that you may note in the statement of activities is presented, as well as affected the beginning balances of the, the water and sewer fund, which is reported on a full accrual basis of accounting. So the result of that implementation of the new GASB pronouncement required calculation of what the additional liability associated with these long-term sick time balances that are not going to be paid out at employee termination, but that employees may carry forward into future years. calculation was determined of a percentage of the usage of those hours that are available for those employees and included within that long-term liability balance. So that's reflected not in the governmental fund financial statements, but it does impact the entity-wide financial statements, as well as the water and sewer fund, which does report on a full accrual basis of accounting. So that restatement resulted from the implementation of the required GASB pronouncement. The management discussion and analysis, which Rosie noted, that's included on pages MDNA 1 through MDNA 17, and I do highly encourage reading through the MDNA, as this does provide a great executive summary of the financial statements and provides additional context to the balances that aren't located in the basic financial statements directly, as it provides some comparative analysis. You can locate current year to prior year, as well as, there's a great deal of discussion on what significant variances as compared to either budget or as compared to prior year and what caused those changes. There's a, a discussion on that, that's not, you can't locate that directly in the basic financial statements, but the MDNA does provide that additional context to the numbers. The basic financial statements begin on pages five through six with the statement of net position, and on page seven and eight, the statement of activities. As I noted, there are statements that are reported on a full accrual basis of accounting, so that's presented here with the statement of net position and statement of activities. These are reported for governmental activities or the village's general governmental funds in total and the village's business-type activities separately. So that would be the water and sewer fund reported in total. What the full accrual basis of accounting lets you know is that these are including long-term assets and liabilities of the village, so any items associated with capital assets net of accumulated depreciation, any of the village's long-term debt balances that are not to be repaid within one year, but in, into the future. Significant balances such as the net pension liabilities associated with the police and fire pension funds, the IMRF net pension liability, as well as the other post-employment benefit liabilities are incorporated into these balances as well, as well as the associated actuarial calculations related to deferred outflows and inflows. Those are presented here. Just one thing to note on page eight is where you'll find that restatement to the beginning balances. So as I, I noted, and as was noted in the independent auditors' report, there was the implementation of GASB 101, so that restatement is presented on page eight. That's how it would have impacted the beginning balances, including that additional accrual as of the beginning of the fiscal year. The following statements, the governmental funds balance sheet is found on pages nine through 10, and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances is located on page 12. These are reported for the village's governmental funds. Each fund that is considered a major fund is reported individually, while the remaining funds that are less significant to the overall financial statements are reported in one total non-major aggregate column. The general fund had an unassigned fund balance of just over 9 million at the end of the fiscal year, of the total of 14.9 million fund balance. That was, you can find that on page 10. The general fund's fund balance increased over the previous fiscal year of 285,370, and that's after taking into consideration 795,000 of transfers out to other funds. So after consideration of transfers from the general fund to other funds for items such as capital, capital outlay and debt transfers, the fund did still have an improvement in its fund balance for the fiscal year. And overall, the governmental funds saw an increase in fund balance of 1.3 million for the fiscal year. That's located on page 12. The enterprise financial statements, the water and sewer fund, those follow on pages 14 through 18. As I noted, those are presented on a full accrual basis of accounting, so those long-term assets and liabilities are reported here. The reason for that is the water and sewer fund is a business-type enterprise fund, and it is not funded by property taxes and intergovernmental revenues, rather, it's funded by operational revenues, charges for services mainly for operating of the fund. The operating income of the water and sewer fund for the fiscal year ended at 985,403. The net position increase was 894,188. So your operating revenue of the fund exceeded the operating expenditures, as well as after taking into consideration items such as depreciation and interest expense and such, the, there was an increase in net position of the water and sewer fund as well. You can find that on page 16. And then following, within the basic financial statements on pages 19 through 20, you'll find the information for the pension trust funds. That would be for the village's combined police and fire pension funds. There was an overall net increase in net position for the pension trust funds of 3.8 million. There is additional financial statement information within the footnotes, as well as later on in the report, to show what the allocation between the police pension fund and the fire pension fund were individually. And then in the footnotes following, I'll just, I just wanted to highlight, related to that restatement on page 73, footnote number 12, that's where you'll find a bit more detail on that implementation of the new GASB pronouncement that was required for the fiscal year. I can briefly discuss the board communication, which is the smaller, second of the two reports that I noted, but I can address any questions on the ACFOR before I begin that. In the board communication, this is a, a separate report, which includes some information that auditing standards require us to report to those charged with governance. Significant items that are disclosed here, and as I already highlighted, are any new GASB implementations or changes in accounting policies that, that result in a significant impact on the financial statements are reported here. Significant estimates related to the balances presented in the financial statements are reported within this communication. There is a paragraph regarding significant estimates explicitly stating the balances that are reported in the entity-wide financial statements, as well as the water and sewer fund financial statements related to the net pension liabilities of the village, as well as the OPEB liability, which are calculated based on actuarial assumptions. We do consider those to be significant estimates, as we do rely on the assumptions used by actuaries in order to determine what balances are reported in the financial statements. We also note if there were any disagreements or issues with management throughout the audit process. As I noted previously, not only did we receive everything on a timely basis, but also the village is very professional and very organized, so there was no such disagreements or issues encountered throughout the audit process. We discuss corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Corrected misstatements being anything that is considered to be an audit adjustment, so any correction or change to the balances that were provided to us that are reflected in the audited financial statements. Throughout our testing, we had just two audit adjustments for the village for the fiscal year, and those are disclosed within this report. What that lets you know is that the information that you're receiving on a monthly basis is accurate as, for the entire fiscal year, we had just two adjustments, and those both related to items that are specifically associated with GASB pronouncements and corrections for year-end presentation purposes. Also, uncorrected misstatements relate to information that came to our attention that we calculated the impact of and were determined not to be significant or material enough to require correction. So although those adjustments are not reflected in the audited balances, we do report these in the communication to the board, so you're aware of what those impacts would have been had those adjustments been made. The two that are listed are both related to GASB pronouncements that were issued in the prior two fiscal years that, based on discussion with the village's finance team, was determined not, because they were not significant enough, we would report these as past adjustments and not reflect them in the financial statements directly, as they are just annual, year-end adjustments related to how the village discloses lease liabilities and information technology liabilities associated with IT subscription arrangements. So the impact of those are listed there. And then I have no other items that rose to the level of a material weakness or significant deficiency or other deficiencies to report throughout our audit testing process. Any questions on the board communication, the audit process, anything else? Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Rosie's at it, then?
That's it.
Okay.
That was a lot. It's a lot to speak.
Yeah, no, it's a lot, but appreciate it, Martha, and I appreciate you going through it in detail. Okay, okay, that's, so that closes out our presentation of our 25, fiscal year 25 annual comprehensive financial report. With that, I have citizen's comments here. I noticed a few people walked in. I just want to make sure we got everybody that wanted to speak is on this forum. Okay. So we have one, two, looks like Margie, Dan, Debbie, Phyllis, and Patty. I'm guessing this is your, want to speak on, on the term limit, 9A, if that's wrong? Oh, yeah, sure, of course. Yeah, do you mind? Just so we have it done? Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, yeah, okay. So that's Stephanie, too. And then there's Dennis and Dorothy. Is it just in a general comment that you want to make, or is there specific to an item on the agenda?
They don't care to speak anymore.
Oh, they do not? Okay, thanks. All right. Probably you just thought there was an attendance or something, sorry. Okay, very good. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So that then leaves, I mean, you guys can speak now, or you can wait a couple minutes? Okay, go ahead. So Margie, you're first? And I just want to remind everyone, all of you have spoken on this issue at one point in time, and although your point of view is very important and respectful, I just ask that you please try to limit your conversation, limit your comments to five minutes, if you don't mind. Okay, so Margie?
Margie Sekander, River Oaks Drive. Six and a half months ago on April 1st, the voters approved a referendum on term limits on the village board of trustees, the village president, and the village clerk. president, and the village clerk. But the board continues to slowly consider next steps, dragging out the issue intentionally. No next steps are needed. The referendum passed. It's our law. No challenges to the petitions were filed. I'm not sure why the village attorney has given three opinions, as of tonight so far, starting with his initial opinion of do nothing. Why aren't those opinions shared with residents, like the Ethics Commission legal opinion that was shared and posted online? The village president is on record accepting voters' approval of term limits. The impact of term limits is 10 years after the voters approved it, due to the state requirement to limit prospectively, limit term limits prospectively. Specifically, for example, the term, the impact to President Adoosy's will be her seventh term. She is allowed to run for a sixth term, even with term limits on. It wouldn't impact until the seventh term. Some trustees, it would impact their fifth term or their sixth term. Isn't 16 to 24 years each long enough to be in local office? Term limits opens possibilities to others to serve. The village of Oak Park and D-90 have unwritten understandings to leave after two terms to give leadership opportunities to others, whether they be long-term residents, newer residents, younger residents. The Collaboration Committee of taxing bodies said the referendum passed and recommend the village pass the resolution regardless of its enforceability, according to Park Commissioner Dan Roche, June 16th. The consensus of that collaborative committee was that not accepting the referendum would set a bad precedent. The referendum passed. It's become law in April. Thank you.
Daniel Lauber, 7215 Oak. I'm a newbie. I've only lived here 37 years. I've never been a fan of term limits in general, but when you've got perpetually low turnout elections, you have perpetually re-elected elected officials, very often without opposition, I think that two terms like the US president is certainly enough for a village president. While I would have preferred this referendum allow three terms for village trustees, because let's face it, it takes half a term to a term to learn your job. Village president always comes from the village board, so they know their job. I've gotten really confused by what's going on here, and I'd appreciate your help. We're told in today's memorandum from the village attorney that term limits can be adopted only by a binding referendum. I need your help. The Constitution of the State of Illinois is silent about whether the referendum is by, has to be binding or advisory. The word binding does not appear in the Illinois State Constitution. So it would really help me and everybody else to understand. If you could cite exactly what case law, tell us where it is written that that referendum had to be binding. I don't think it does, based on the plain language of the law. And therefore, all this debate of what the, over the petitions and the wording as whether or not it was binding or advisory is really immaterial. I doubt if anybody who signed the petition or voted on the referendum thought it was anything but a clear direction to the village board on how to act. Second, there's, also confusing me is there's this Illinois statute, 65 ILCS 5/31.1-10-17, Section 3.1, that it talks about term limits as being imposed by referendum, ordinance, or otherwise, three different times. Now, why would the legislature put that in there if a village board, a non-home rule village board, could not adopt term limits even from a non-binding advisory referendum by ordinance? It defies explanation. Perhaps someone here can provide an explanation with citations to case law or state attorney general opinions that explain why you could not just adopt an ordinance, given the referendum was held and the people voted in favor of it. I just don't understand this. I don't understand why this village board has been less than transparent in sharing with us, the public, the village attorney's memos on this. This is not something that needs to be some, subject to executive session. It should be publicly discussed unless you're anticipating or you're, have a majority on the board who's really wants to make sure that term limits are not adopted. And that would certainly not be going along with how the voters voted. So I would urge you, one, provide some clarity about how this has to be binding, the sources, where this comes from. I'm sure Lance must know, and I'd appreciate if you'd share it with us, and why the legislature would allow you to impose a term limits by referendum, ordinance, or otherwise, if it was not the intent of the legislature and their interpretation of the Constitution of the State of Illinois to allow you to simply adopt an ordinance, especially after a referendum has been held, whether or not it is binding or advisory. So I hope, I realize that this effort to say, let's hold a third referendum, quite honestly, my interpretation of it is, it's to kill this off, because the public is sick and tired of referendums on this question. And it would probably be scheduled to be at the election that would be the least likely for it to pass. That's my terrible, terrible suspicion. I hope that doesn't happen. I hope you will think this out carefully, that you will adopt the ordinance that implements this referendum, which passed, whether or not it was binding or advisory, unless you know something that's in the Constitution between the lines, or some case law that said otherwise. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Debbie? Oh, no? Okay. Oh, okay, go ahead, Debbie.
I'm Patty Henick, 700 Bonnie Bray. I'm going to basically reinforce a bit of what Dan has already said. But first, I want to start by saying, the absence of more residents here shouldn't be an indication that there isn't still continued interest in the term limits issue. Residents voiced their opinion at the ballot box and should not have to continue to attend meetings to ensure the results of a free and fair election are upheld. In regards to the petition itself, the title of the petition sheet clearly stated, "Petition for River Forest Binding Referendum." For someone to say the petition was anything but binding is being obtuse. According to Merriam-Webster, "Someone who is obtuse is a person who isn't thinking clearly, or who otherwise refuses to see something apparent to others." On September 16th, The Wednesday Journal printed a letter to the, printed a letter to the editor from President Adoosy. In it, she states, quote, "First, I want to assure you that there is no debate that the referendum for term limits was approved in the April 1st election. We, as a board, are committed to taking final action on this matter in a timely manner, to ensure our residents who voted are heard. Our responsibility now is to confirm that term limits can be implemented in a way that will stand up to any potential future legal challenges." If there is no debate that the referendum for term limits was approved, and if there is genuine interest in ensuring that residents who voted are heard, it makes no sense to put forward another ballot question, unless the true intent is to try and get a different outcome. As Dan also pointed out, the village attorney has provided a legal opinion to the board as the basis for tonight's discussion. I question why this full information has not been made public, and why the FOIA request from The Wednesday Journal has been denied. I would further question how sound this legal advice is, if it can't stand public scrutiny. This is a public matter that deserves full public transparency. Thank you.
All right. Now Debbie or Phyllis? What do you guys want? No, Debbie. Okay.
Hi, Debbie Borman. Thank you for listening to my comments. I'd just like to start by saying, while many of us may have spoken before, there have been several meetings and memos in between the last time some of us have spoken that, you know, force us to be compelled to respond. I, too, will address the mini-memo that appears at the last two pages of the packet that was distributed today. I believe it's pages 445 and 446. The memo provided in the packet explains the difference between binding and advisory referenda, but leaves out something crucial. Each type of referenda has a different form and intent under Illinois law. As Patty just explained, the April 1st referendum was drafted, certified, and approved as a binding question. The substance of the question controls, not the introductory material. My question to this board and the village attorney is, what legal authority does the board have to support the supposition that the question is advisory? What case law can you cite showing that the question is advisory? Moreover, when a binding referendum passes, it is self-executing. That means it automatically becomes law without further board action. River Forest now has term limits for its elected officials. These additional meetings to interpret that outcome are unnecessary. The memo further suggests that the village could not adopt an ordinance codifying term limits, claiming it would not have legal effect. Why not? What legal authority, case law, Illinois, supports the idea that memorializing the results of a free and fair election has no effect? As has been stated numerous times tonight and other times, the referendum is binding. Codifying it is simply the proper administrative, although unnecessary, step. The memo does correctly note that an objection could have been filed. Note that no objection was filed to this petition within the proper legal timeframe, and that window closed many, many months before today and before April 1st. The objection is therefore waived, and raising doubts about this referendum, both procedurally as invalid, is damaging to the public trust. This is a time when our nation faces election interference and denial. River Forest should set a better example. The voters, the constituents, spoke clearly on April 1st, and our decision deserves to be respected, not reinterpreted. Thank you.
Hi, Phyllis Rubin, 411, Ashland, 6B. Yes, I have talked about this before, but I change what I say every time, because time passes and things happen. I would say, I have read in the paper that what, what you might be considering is another vote on this referendum. I would say that's a waste of my taxpayers' dollars and all the taxpayer dollars in the village, because we've already had a vote. We've already had a vote. And I agree, and I know I, I wrote about this, because I was at that last board meeting where you talked about this, is that apparently there are memos that are coming to the board from you, Lance, and it's been asked that you give a summary of them. I'm not sure that you have done that, and so we are in the dark about why you are telling, someone's telling the board, there's some advice, that there's some question about this referendum that was passed. So we don't know what you know. And there is a difference on the, differing opinions on the board about how to read the municipal code on this issue. What I would say is, if a majority of this board does not vote, does vote, if a, I'll start again, if the majority of this board does vote to redo the referendum, I would like to say to River Forest residents, this is what power does. It allows you to ignore the will of the people and to call a repeat vote to, I would guess that you're hopefully, hoping it will overturn the vote that was already taken. That's not okay. I also, in thinking about this, it's like doing, if they, if they vote to do another referendum again, that's redundant, then it's like a person who goes to a doctor, gets a diagnosis, doesn't like it, goes to another doctor, gets a diagnosis, doesn't like it, goes to a third doctor, gets a different diagnosis, and likes it. This is not okay. We know that's not okay, right? Because you're looking for the doctor that will tell you what you want to hear. The majority of the voters of the village of River Forest, who voted, voted for the, for term limits. That's the diagnosis you have gotten. Thank you.
Also, just so you know, Phyllis, there is a synopsis, like as trustee Brennan asked in the packet. Yeah. Okay. Stephanie? Phyllis is saying she's told it's not a full one, just a synopsis. Stephanie Petersmark, 1400 Block of Clinton Place.
I've not spoken on this issue before, and I'm really disappointed to have to be here tonight. Okay? This is beyond perplexing. It's suspicious. Everybody sees it. The light is shining on you now. I don't know what it is you are thinking right now. Who wants to cling to power like this? I don't get it. To not share the information, to spend my money paying a lawyer who's refusing to tell me what he's doing? Is he working for me? I don't get this at all. You have concocted some obscure, to use another word that was already used tonight, explanation for some potential lawsuit that might happen from some person that doesn't even exist right now?
Excuse me, can you click the button on the mic and turn it on?
Yeah, I think you asked.
I don't know which button.
It's just like a little tab, right?
The green light?
Did anybody hear any of that?
No, yeah, we heard it. It just said.
Wait, did the, did the mic go off in between speakers?
I think, I can't hear it.
I think she just touched.
Who's saying they can't hear it?
The rest of us.
Okay, well, trustee Vasquez, hopefully the recording in the room managed to get it and you can hear it, so that I don't have to repeat myself. I know you guys don't want to listen to this, because you've already had to hear it again. Well, I don't want to be here either. And the amount of money and time you are wasting of your own, let alone these taxpayers, it's, again, it's suspicious. It makes no sense. Why are you doing this? The reasons you've given are really, they're not passing the sniff test. You know it, we know it. Lawyer over there, you know it. Give us all the stuff that we pay for, okay? Somebody over here is deciding to spend my money paying that lawyer over there to do work that he's not giving to me. You, you guys denied a FOIA request? I mean, do we really have to, like, sue the village? It's going too far. Do the right thing. Stop wasting your time, stop wasting our time. Please, do the right thing. Okay, thanks, Stephanie. All right, that ends the citizen comment, so we'll move on to the elected official comments and announcements. Bobby, you want to go first, or?
I really, I don't have anything this evening. Thanks.
Okay. Well, Megan?
Okay, I'd like to begin with a land acknowledgement. As we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on land that was once and is inhabited by indigenous people, including the Ojibwa, Chipewa, Menominee, Potawatomi nations, and more. We remember our nation's history and honor the native people as stewards of this land that was colonized, and that River Forest continues to be a place that many people from different backgrounds from different backgrounds live and gather. Today marks Indigenous Peoples' Day. The history of River Forest includes Menominee and Chipewa settlements near what is now the, near what is now known as Des Plaines Avenue and Roosevelt Road in the forest preserves of Cook County. The Menominee would have been driven out by the Potawatomi Nation in 1810, and the Potawatomi were forced to move west of the Mississippi by the Treaty of Chicago in 1833. In 1831, we saw immigration into this area with the first steam sawmill on the banks of the Des Plaines River and in 1842, the first planked road on what is now Lake Street was created. River Forest has grown up and out of these native tribes that have lived here. Today is an opportunity to be mindful of who has lived here and who has been forced to leave, where we've come from, and who has the right to live here today. Maintaining our sense of belongingness in our village as a place that welcomes everybody regardless of immigration status is of the utmost importance.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, Maggie. Katie?
We acknowledge that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, which promotes the recognition of a more complete understanding of American history. This commemoration and recognition comes at a particularly poignant time as we consider the ethical, moral, legal, and economic impacts that the federal immigration policy and actions are having on our nation's immigrant population. We consider the moral obligations that we as a society owe to immigrants regardless of their status. And we acknowledge that our constitution and the U.S. laws afford the same dignity and due process rights to immigrants as they do to the rest of us here.
I just wanted to say thank you to Rosie and the staff for all the work you did to compile the annual report. I've been on both sides as an auditor and having an audit done, so I understand all that goes into it and I just wanted to say thank you because I know that's a lot of work.
Thanks. Res?
Good evening, everyone. I also was going to acknowledge Rosie, Kiki, the village staff for, again, their hard work on the financial report and for another successful achievement, certificate of achievement in producing that report. So thank you all for that. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Res. Lisa?
Hello. I just want to echo what everybody else has said. I think that trustee Cascatallo, trustee Brennan, Rosie, everybody's said it better than I ever could, and that's all that I have. Thanks.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Erica?
Hi, yes. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, everyone. To Lisa's point, couldn't have said it better than trustee Cascatallo and trustee Brennan. I did want to check in with Matt and then Chief Greenwood. I've been getting a couple of questions by residents recently in relation to immigration status and ICE and federal agents in our town and more broadly, our surveillance that we have within the village. We know that Forest Park recently had, I guess I'm not sure if it was a hack or a mistake where information that they considered being in a closed loop was directed to federal agencies. And there is wide concern considering Oak Park just ended their contract for six cameras and the knowledge that River Forest has 44 cameras and what that could mean to our broader community. I have heard reports as well that even if we decide to turn it off on our end, that the people, the vendor who we use, could possibly leave it on, on their end and it can still, excuse me, it can still be hacked. So I don't know if there's anything that you are able to provide tonight, but would like to get more information about that and start that conversation.
It sounds like there's two questions here, but.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Bachner. First off, I would like to say that that is one of our primary concerns amongst the police department in the village, to protect that information and use it as it was originally designed to. Our system does not share with any federal agencies. My understanding is that the incident in Forest Park was that a staff member had enabled that work on accident to connect it to the federal agency improperly. In our case, we have a review process that's very limited to our command team for sharing information with any federal agencies, which we don't do, especially not for immigration enforcement actions. Happy to discuss our system with you or anyone in the public to assure how we use it, how useful it is for our officers in investigating crimes. And I know that this is a major concern in the community and we, we believe that, we know there are the, the measures in place to prevent that from being used improperly.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And it might be useful just as part of our agenda at one of these meetings so the public can see that.
Yeah, we'll be happy to go through the process of how, which is fine.
Okay. Can I just ask a follow-up question to that? So I understand that we don't share it with federal agencies, but probably, I'm assuming that as part of our crime fighting, we do share it with our other municipalities because we're working together to, you know, crimes aren't limited to the confines of each municipality. So I guess the thought I have going through my mind as I'm hearing you say that we don't share with the feds, we're sharing with other municipalities. How do we control that other municipalities aren't then sharing it more widely?
That's not really how the systems are set up. There's a log for the information that's shared. For the most case, for license plate readers that are really in question here, they're tied to a warrant that's outstanding for a crime or a missing car, missing person type thing, and that's, that will alert the municipalities, the nearby that we might share with, that they're, they're in town. So it's not like a, a constant back and forth of sharing that information.
Specific to one thing, one thing that's been identified and so that one piece of information is shared?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Erica, anything else?
That's it.
All right, very good. Okay, just a few, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, Happy Columbus Day, they share those days. Also, I want to also echo what Rosa just said about the audit. It's a major undertaking and it's clear that our staff and our village board is running a very healthy financial organization. And that's real important in today's environment, given the uncertainty of federal and state grants and, and everything, quite frankly. So with that, I mean, I want to congratulate all of you, the staff and Matt, for, you know, giving us a great financial reporting. And I look forward to getting the distinguished honor award again. So congratulations. I also attended one of, one of our commissioners' memorial services today, David Reno Ogden. As you know, he passed away suddenly a couple of weeks ago. He was on our Historic Preservation Commission for 17 years. I know people think that, you know, that there should be a short term on commissioners. Boy, David was just a gem on our Historic Preservation Commission. He was just, gave a ton of experience. And so we, we have those types of commissioners in our, in our, on our commissions, and we also have new commissions, commissioners, so it's a nice mix of experience and new commissioners. So please keep the Reno Ogden family in your prayers and thoughts as they go through this really unfortunate situation. So that's all I have. We'll go ahead and move on to consent, the consent agenda.
Rosa, can I ask that we pull A and N? A because I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm going to abstain from voting on it, and N because I have a question.
Okay, so Rosa, A, yeah.
And then I, for me, B. No, for me, it's B.
And you went E off?
B.
A B. Okay, so you weren't there. Okay.
And for me, A, 6A. I would like to say.
So it's gonna.
6A, right. So A, B, and N.
Okay.
All right, so go ahead. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of A, B, and N as in Nancy.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items C through M.
Actually, one more thing, take off C.
Take off C.
Take off C.
Okay. No, so Bob, maybe the motion should be consent agenda items.
D through M.
We're taking off. Okay, that's fair.
KDS.
Yeah, that's fine. D through M. Okay. Do your second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on those items?
I have one comment, and that's on item K. I wanted to note that the cost to the Public Works Garage Rooftop Solar Design was 159,668 with a net village cost of 16,695 after rebates and credits. So good job to our Public Works Department for getting that number down.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions on these items? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to read out loud and then take the vote. Read out loud each item.
Okay, yep. Item 6D, monthly department reports. E, August and September 2025 financial reports. F, accounts payable, September 2025, $2,187,866.86. G, administration department report. H, acceptance of FY 2025 annual comprehensive financial report. I, purchase approval, Public Works aerial truck Versalift, $222,605 resolution. J, authorization to sell surplus vehicles, 2003 International 4400 aerial truck, 2015 Ford Explorer, 2011 Ford Escape, 2015 Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicle Ordinance. K, award of contract, 2025 Public Works Garage Rooftop Solar Design Build, Wind Free Wind and Solar Energy Design Company, $159,668 net village cost, $16,695 after rebates and credits. L, award of contract, Wyman's Police Locker Room, Futurity 19, Inc., $73,000. And M, adoption of municipal grocery tax ordinance. Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Cascatallo?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez? Res?
Res? Can you hear him?
Yeah.
Now we can.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we could take A, B, and C together.
Well, for A, you have an abstention from trustee Bachner and myself.
And then you have the same for B and C, I think, with you. So we'll just do them individually. That's fine. Let's go ahead and have a consent, if we can get an approval for item A on the consent agenda in a second.
Motion to approve consent agenda item A.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, Rosa, if you can read it out loud and then take the vote.
Item A, village board of trustee executive session meeting minutes, August 25th, 2025. Trustee Cascatallo?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez? Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
And then trustee Bachner.
No, go ahead, call him and then they'll abstain.
Okay. Trustee Bachner?
Abstain.
Trustee Brennan?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, then item B and C, I think we could put together. So if I can get a motion to approve consent agenda, item B and C.
Motion to approve consent agenda items B and C.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to read it out loud and then take the vote, please.
Item B, village board of trustee meeting minutes, September 22nd, 2025. C, village board of trustees executive session meeting minutes, September 22nd, 2025. Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Cascatallo?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Abstain.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Okay. So then we've got item N. If I can get a motion in a second for item N?
Contract approval Economic Development Consulting Services, Ryan LLC. Motion to approve consent agenda item M.
That's okay.
Second.
All right. All right, so I guess I'll ask questions.
So this item is a recommendation from the staff to engage Ryan LLC to conduct work related to economic development and TIF calculations. And I pulled it because I wanted to, I noticed that it's not going to public bid. It's a recommendation that we engage Ryan LLC, and I wanted to understand or confirm my hunch as to why we're not going to public bid. And is that because this is the, this entity has been the village's TIF consultant for several years? And do we already have a contract with them covering this? And is that why we're not going to public bid?
Yes, largely, yes. We've had experience working with Ryan LLC for several years. They're, they merged or acquired McKenna Consulting, which helped consult on the creation of the TIF district. So we've worked with them for several years, a supplemental services agreement, so it doesn't require to go out to public bid like a contracting project. So this is more of a comfort and familiarity with the village on why that's recommended.
Thanks for that explanation.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, if you can read the item and then take the vote.
Item N, contract approval Economic Development Consulting Services, Ryan LLC, $27,500. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Cascatallo?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So that concludes our consent agenda. We'll move right on to the unfinished business, which is the, the discussion regarding term limit referendum. So I'm going to hand this over to our village administrator, Matt Walsh.
All right. So tonight, there is no formal action expected or required. The, the hope here tonight is to gather a consensus for how to proceed with the term limit discussion. At the last meeting, if this was discussed in September, there were a few questions about examples and the Illinois Municipal Code that attorney Molina went and reviewed, and we shared that with the village board. And there was a synopsis provided in the village board packet that kind of combines what attorney Molina's findings and opinions are from the original memo in September, and then also the supplement that addressed some of the questions at the last meeting. So I'll hand it over to attorney Molina to.
Okay, so I will address the board, and the board can request whatever other questions the members of public brought up. But I'll start by just describing the supplemental memo. The way I saw it, there were three primary questions that came out of the earlier description of where I thought we were after the April 1st vote. One of those questions was, does section 17, referred to by one of the members of the public, does it confer authority on a non-home rule municipality for a village board without any other action to impose term limits? And I don't believe it does. It doesn't grant any authority to a municipality. It describes the non-retroactivity, which makes it clear because there had been numerous, numerous, relatively numerous binding referenda that had been thrown off ballots because courts looked at how they were worded in a way that would potentially be retroactive and said it can't stay on. So the statute tries to clarify to make it easier to put a referendum on the ballot. The other question.
Wait, before you go to the second question, can I ask a question about the first question? Wait, before you go to the second question, can I ask a question about the first question?
Sure.
Um, so it's, it's your opinion that the village board cannot enact an ordinance uh for term limits? And just to clarify...
There's a lot, there's a lot of references here to not being able to enact an ordinance. Of course, the village can enact an ordinance. The, one, there, there are like a number of questions that are floating around this topic. The specific question with this statute is, does it confer the authority for a village board to impose binding term limits without anything else? And I don't believe it does. There, there were questions that, that were raised that said that the board can't approve an ordinance, and that's not correct. What I was trying to describe is this referendum, whatever it was, whether binding or advisory, is what it is, and nothing the board can do now can change it, which is consistent with what Ms. Borman was saying. If it was binding, it's the law now, and the board doesn't need to do anything. If it adopts an ordinance, it does what some municipalities do, and they take the criteria you need in order to be eligible to run for office, and they put them in their code. Do they need to do that? No. They're, they're state-driven, they're form-of-government driven. They're there whether they're in your code or not. By putting it in the code, the, the board is saying, this is, this is what it is. And that, and that's common, um, a- as was raised with the question about uh Tinley Park. You, you'll note that that codification refers specifically to the binding referendum that was run November fourth of twenty-fourteen. It codifies what was already enacted by law. It doesn't change anything, but it codifies it. So there are different ways to talk about whether you're passing an ordinance or not.
What I'm getting at is, um, I, I think what I hear you saying, or I've heard, read what you're saying, that the village board cannot take the referendum vote and with that result that we, we see, and uh create an ordinance enacting term limits for River Forest. Is that what you are saying to us?
No, it can pass an ordinance that treats those term limits as being the law. It can do that. But if they aren't the law, that ordinance doesn't affect that at all. It, it can't make something that isn't already in effect binding. It just notarizes it. It just creates...
Okay, you're, you're changing my language a bit. Let's assume that the ordinance, the, the referendum that passed was advisory. Let's just assume that. I'm not saying that it was. And we have, um, the major, the majority of residents who voted on that voted, yes, we want term limits. We see that vote that comes to our board. Can our board now take that advisory uh, uh, vote and decide we're going to enact term limits by ordinance?
I don't believe it.
That's my question for you.
No, I don't believe it is the...
So can you explain why and what the um legal basis is? Statutory case law?
And then that answer will, will try to encompass some of the questions that were asked. So one of the questions had to do with, what's the difference between a binding and an advisory referendum? The Illinois Constitution says the terms of office are to be determined by referendum. And it was pointed out that it doesn't say binding or advisory. So here's what I think about that. Referendum is a binding referendum. Things that are reserved to the people to be changed only by referendum, of, in other words, not by their delegated authorities that are put into place by elections, are binding. That's what a referendum is. An advisory referendum is a creature of statute that allows something called a referendum, which isn't actually a real referendum. It's basically an opinion poll, put in the form of a question, what voters, people say they want, whether by petition or sometimes the board itself, wants to know what, what the voters think about things. Some, some of those things, the board does have the control to change. For instance, whether to allow legalized marijuana within the corporate boundaries of the village, the sale, the dispensaries. Some municipalities ran advisory referenda, some boards did, to find out. They, they wanted an opinion poll. But even if those referen, if, if, if the ref, if a referendum on that issue failed, the board could still allow it. And if the referendum passed, the board could still allow it or not. Doesn't have to follow it. They're, they're just an opinion. And so that's, that's the difference between the two.
So um, I think one of the things that, in your opinion that you're stating tonight, is that the um section three point one dash ten dash seventeen refers to referendum, and you're saying that that refer, that word referendum in that code automatically is defined as binding referendum, even though...
Seventeen doesn't include the word referendum at all. Well, a referendum ordinance or other, right?
Yeah.
So what, so ask the question again now that I'm following you.
Yeah. So you're saying your definition of referendum is automatically binding, but it doesn't, it doesn't say binding or advisory in that code, in that space. So it could be, the, there's nowhere where it, it details that.
Well, here's, here's what I know. So first of all, and we need to keep this in perspective. Nothing about my opinion or anyone else's opinion really changes what happened on April first, okay? It either is binding or it's not. One of the, one interesting question that, you know, I have had thought of, but no one had brought up, was brought up by Ms. Borman, which is, well, anyone, it was the clerk sent it in. First of all, just because the wording is binding doesn't make it binding, because advisory referendum petition can be, have binding verbiage. That's irrelevant. But Ms. Borman, the best argument, I think, is that it was waived, quote-unquote waived. And that's an argument. So let's go down the road to, you know, twenty whatever, thirty whatever, when someone is, is gonna be running for what could be a third term. And somebody challenges that, that elected official or that candidate, that, hey, you're, you're going for a third term, and there's this term limit that was passed way back in twenty-twenty-five, and you're not eligible. And the, the attorney for that, that candidate would say, well, there's an issue about that. And I don't think it was solid enough to be binding, because there was a question with the, with the papers. And put aside Ms. Borman's argument about they were clear enough to be binding, the fact that they had advisory on them is de minimis or whatever. Put that aside. And assume that the argument is, well, it could have been challenged at the time and it's waived. But there's a good argument, I think, that it wasn't waived, because that argument about which it was, it, it wasn't there to really be challenged. In other words, a candidate could have looked at that and thought, you know, this looks like a mess. I don't know what this is. And, and someone might not have, not have been opposed to it. And I also think that when you're talking about citizen-generated petitions, it's critical what the signers thought they were authorizing. And if there's any question, I think a court would say, this is the analysis, because to run for office is a property right. It's a constitutional right to run for office. And if a court is looking at a situation where term limits, a referendum passed, but the petitions that authorized it to be placed on the ballot are confusing as to what the petition really was, I think you err on the side of non-binding, because you're changing the form of government.
Can we stick with that for a minute? Because I just have to ask my question again.
Please, let, this is our time to kinda discuss, otherwise we'll just stop. I mean, this is our time to discuss it.
So, so lowest common denominator, just an assumption. I'm not saying it's my opinion that it was advisory, just an assumption that it's advisory. You're saying that our board can, based on that result, based on any result, enact an ordinance with, for the term limits?
No. I mean, you can, but it won't, it won't be binding. It, it won't change your form of government. It won't create binding term limits unless it's based on a binding referendum.
So we would enact an ordinance that would do nothing?
Well, let, let, let's talk about that for a minute, do nothing. Some of the public comment raised how there are traditions, or there are understandings that people will only run for two terms. For many, for many decades, the US presidency had that same sort of understanding, right? And then Roosevelt broke that, and then you get the amendment about two terms. So it's not that it's meaningless, but the question is, is will it survive a legal challenge? And I don't know that it would, unless...
Is, is there any precedent for this issue? Have you seen it not survive? An advisory referendum passed? A municipality then takes that refer, that advisory referendum, enacts an ordinance, and then that, that ordinance is challenged in the future as not being valid?
The, the closest, not, not as it relates to term limits, but there, there are some examples, and I cite some of the cases. The Stokie case is somewhat, somewhat relevant to that, where they thought they were creating a binding sort of elected office. Ordinance was passed, and the court found that, that it wasn't, you know, constitutionally proper.
Yeah, but that was a different issue.
Well, I know. I'm saying, I said analogous.
Okay. Because I asked this question to the village administrator in the interim between the time that we received your memo and tonight's meeting, and he was kind enough to pass the question to you and then pass your response back to me.
Yes, I know.
And the response I got was, it's a case of first impression. So that tells me it's unclear.
Yeah, oh yeah. And I never said it was clear.
Yeah.
I never said that it's my opinion that this referendum was binding, or it was absolutely not binding. I think there's a substantial question about it.
That, that's, but that's not my question. My question is, do we have it within our authority to pass an ordinance if we want to for term limits?
Yes, you can pass an ordinance, but there's a follow-up question. Will it be binding? No, not unless the referendum underneath it is found to have been binding.
And can you um just reiterate why the referendum has to be binding in order for us to approve an ordinance if we have an advisory referendum?
Because it goes to the form of government, and in the Illinois Constitution, it is reserved to the people to, to determine those terms of office.
And where are you citing that? Um, because again, I go back to um this one piece, the one piece that talks about term limits. And there's nothing that says that, that is a form of government. And there is, there are things that say that it is not a change of government.
You mean section seventeen, the statutory provision you're, you're talking about?
Yeah.
So that is not, in my opinion, a grant of authority to a non-home rule municipality. And it also conflicts with the terms of office being uh reserved to the people in the Illinois Constitution.
Okay.
Where do you have that term limits are a change of form of government? Because my understanding of this is that it is not a change of form. A change of form of government would be changing from like a village president to a mayor. And this is just how elections are executed.
Actually, village president and mayor, those terms are interchangeable under the statute.
Okay, so strong mayor to strong village administrator.
That would be a change of the form.
Okay.
This is analogous to that in the sense that it requires referendum approval. And, and it actually makes sense when you think about it, because the board is where you are when you are elected to office. The terms of office come before you get here. If you can change those terms just by being here, that's not really consistent with the way the terms of office are be, you know, in order to change them, it's prior to being elected. So it's really...
Are you able to show us where term limits are considered a change of form of government?
Well, he, here, here's what I can do. The, the Tinley Park example is a good one.
Yeah.
It's only historical, so, you know, a court didn't rule it, but there was an advisory referendum, and it passed. And then after that advisory referendum, members of the public tried to run a binding referendum. And although the original one was thrown off, the board itself passed a binding referendum resolution to put on a subsequent ballot. It passed, and they adopted ordinances consistent with it. To, you know, to sort of codify, here's what happened. And it even cites to the date that the election was wrong. So that's, so that's how it would typically work. So if we go back to the first question, and the first question is advisory versus binding, unless we have a binding referendum that was clearly stated on all the forms that people signed, I mean, even, even the people who created the, the petitions admitted that it was, it was confusing. Do we have to go back and start at step one, I guess is my question? Is that the clearest way to go? So really, I was trying to answer a question. Is there anything, you can do nothing, and then either it is binding or it's not, and it sits there. I, I think of it as a little like a time bomb, but there's nothing legally wrong with that. You know, you could leave it there. You could pass an ordinance if the majority of you think it was binding, and then that will be there. And, you know, again, maybe it'll never be challenged.
But, 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 but there is, there is the possibility that we are going to put the village in a position where they have to defend their position.
Well, no, not really. The, the village would not take a, a position on it necessarily. If it were tried to be challenged now, um, I, I think now a court would look at it and say, there's not really a, a question. There's not really something that is ripe to be decided, you know, because there's no candidate. There's no, nobody there. If it was prior to the election, I think a court would have, would have addressed it. You know, either if there was an electoral board challenge, or if the clerk refused to certify it and someone challenged that. Then it would have been decided, but it wasn't.
So the, the, we could codify the results of the election through ordinance, and then the time bomb would be a legal challenge, it's a hypothetical legal challenge at some point in the future? That's what you're saying? Okay, so that's just a, a maybe. Could, could happen somewhere. Could the, any piece of ordinance be challenged legally?
Could what?
Any piece of ordinance be challenged legally? Like any of our decisions?
Oh, any of your ordinances?
Yes.
Um, well, you need, not, not in a vacuum. I mean, if there's no, if there's no damage that's being alleged, there wouldn't be really a justiciable issue. If, if, if it's something that someone says is facially invalid under the First Amendment, that a court will look at. And, and, you know, assuming no one's being harmed by this, in the way like, your ordinance requires me to use these materials when I build my house, and I think that's not consistent with your ordinances.
So it would...
That, if you're, you know, if that's your claim, a court will look at that and say, yes, it's either a legal imposition or your ordinance doesn't really say that, or it'll decide that.
But in this case, it's a hypothetical person who would potentially be harmed by not being able to run for a third term in office at some future point, TBD. Ten years from now.
Well, at that point, it would probably be a real issue, because someone would be running, would have filed petition papers, and someone will be, someone who remembers the term limits and knows about them will challenge that person and say, hey, you're not eligible. That, that certainly would be ripe, and, and that would be decided.
So Lance, it's, to follow up on Megan's question, though, you said it, it, it wouldn't cost the taxpayers any money, because we're not doing anything.
Well, that, well, that would, because the electoral board process would, absolutely, yeah. And you have to do those.
Maria, I would think so.
So between the two options of either treating the past referendum question as binding and self-enacting in law, and treating it as advisory, and our board deciding, based on the residents' vote, we want to codify it and pass an ordinance enacting term limits, I would choose the second, because I think it's safer.
Are you saying just pass an ordinance without running another referendum, just pass it?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what, those are the two considerations.
Well, those, those were the same. What was the first one you said?
The first would be determining that it was binding and therefore self-enacting.
By discussion determining. Normally, when you determine something as a board, you pass a resolution or an ordinance.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that, that would be a ministerial thing, because it would be self-enacting. The other option would be considering it to be advisory, and then the board deciding, okay, we want to listen to what the residents, how they voted and what their mindset is, and we are going to create an ordinance enacting term limits based on their, their vote for term limits, considering it to be advisory.
Okay, meaning like this is stated to be the village's policy going forward?
No, no, advisory was modifying the referendum question, not the ordinance. That the village board would consider the referendum question to have been advisory. We take it under advisement. We see what the residents wanted, and we choose to enact an ordinance for term limits based on the language of the referendum question.
I don't think, I don't think that makes it any more binding. I, I think Ms. Borman's argument is the one you make then.
Well, that's a Tinley Park, that was, that was the Tinley Park issue.
Well, no, no, because trustee Brennan is saying there is no, you're gonna pass the ord- Well, no, no, because trustee Brennan is saying there is no, you're going to pass the ordinance even though it was advisory and you're somehow going to make it enforceable.
Yeah, can't do it.
And I don't think you can do it.
And I think my opinion on this is that, I'm not even sure if it's a conservative read. I, I think that the 2016 edition of section 3.1-10-17 to municipal code was a legislative move that effectively activated the as provided by law clause in Article 7, Section 7, 3A. And so it says the municipalities, it does not include non-home rule or home rule. It says municipalities to be taken as all municipalities may impose term limits by referendum ordinance or otherwise.
Then you wouldn't need an ordinance.
Eric, I appreciate, I appreciate your research. It'd be nice if we had it, because I, I don't know that it's fair that we, we.
It's in the memo.
Well, I, I address it. And can I say just one thing in self-defense? Can I say just one thing in self-defense? You all can release all these opinions, I can't.
Right.
Right, because you're our attorney.
I, I cannot release.
We know that Lance, and we've, and we, I know, and that's why I wanted to make sure.
So you're, you're free to plaster them all over the walls if you want, but.
Address, I mean, we did provide a synopsis as requested, so.
I have a odd question, if you will. So you, you referenced somebody that's running for a third term in the future and that person would be affected by this law referendum, whatever you want to call it. Can somebody else, like, let's say this gets passed tonight. Can somebody next week, next month, challenge it and say, I don't think you guys had the right to pass that? Or does it have to be somebody that's actually running for a third term?
Well, it depends on what that thing is that you're passing. So let's assume it's an ordinance that says we now have term limits. Someone could try to challenge that, but I think there's a pretty good argument that it's not really ripe for any kind of, any kind of adjudication because of the reasons that we've talked about. At this point, it's hypothetical. The referendum is what it was. Either it was binding or it's not. Nobody's affected by it now and this ordinance doesn't change a thing about whether it was binding or not, so there's nothing to really, really adjudicate.
Yeah, I couldn't, can't imagine a judge accepting it. It's not a ripe issue.
You know what I mean? That's, yeah, that's.
All right, it's not, right.
But it could happen, people sue all the time.
And I guess the other third option beyond what Katie just mentioned and, and actually the residents mentioned about just getting it right. You know, putting together a binding referendum, passing a binding referendum and putting on a future election that's going to meet all the requirements of all the dates and is a lot like what happened to Tinley Park is kind of what the research shows. It's that here, the advisory referendum passed, Tinley Park put it back on a November election, a binding referendum and it passed. So it seems to be that would be the normal, natural thing for us to do is to, to do that. I don't know why we, we wouldn't want to try to get it right.
We chose not to do it in December.
December?
Yeah, in December. We chose not to, not to move forward with the binding referendum at that point.
Actually, what we, what we agreed to do is not rush it. And I think at that time, we all said that it is something we would support as long as we did due diligence and didn't rush it to get it right. And I think that's the thing, is I would say that as a trustee of the Village of River Forest, I have a public trust and fiduciary responsibility to manage village affairs in the best interests of the village and all of its residents today and in the future. And I don't think putting in place a quote unquote "time bomb" that could be enacted at a future date is a smart thing for us to do, particularly because we have time to do it right. Take the clean, like, just make it clear. Don't change anything in a language. Use the language that's been put forth. And then do it as a clearly binding referendum and follow the Tinley Park model.
Trustee Cascatalo is saying that we had the opportunity to.
We did, but we did, but it wouldn't have changed it. I think what, what Lisa's trying to say is that had we just got it right. I mean, we were, we're in Christmas and holidays and, and, and I think.
I agree, I think we could have gotten it right. I think we could have done that.
We could have, but why? Wouldn't the same results would have happened?
Because we spent 10 months of legal bills.
Well, I, I don't think we spent.
Talking about this.
I don't know. I, I think it's something that's really useful. I mean, you guys are asking questions.
We are, but I agree with Lisa that we have fiduciary responsibility. And I think that that does include not extending processes beyond what we need to.
I agree. Now we got to fix it again. So I think that's, I think we're in agreement. I know, I'm going to have, you know, we can kind of just. Okay, Margie, Margie, you know, Margie, please, I, you know, I, hey, 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 hey. I went to a memorial service today and you know what they said? And I want to remind the audience and our trustees, you know, our dear friend David Rayno Agden, you know, the, the thing that they said, that he said always is be kind. And Margie, you were there. And all I'm asking you is just be kind, let's just be kind. We'll get to where we need to be, you know, hopefully relatively soon. But if you're going to just spout out things, then we're going to have to adjourn because it just isn't making sense. So please, I'm asking you, let us discuss it. And I promise you, everybody will have a time to talk to you afterwards. Thank you. So, I'm sorry, you just wanted to, okay. All right, so again, I'm not to, I hear you, what you said, Megan, and I think we wanted to get it right. It's just that we were hurrying up. We would have gotten to the same result, right? We would have gotten on the ballot at the same result for 2027 and 2029. I think that's what Res, trustee Cascatalo said, right? I mean, it's like, we, we can get here. Give us time to think about it, make sure we get the wording right. And I, so it wasn't like anybody was denying it or not wanting to do it. It just, I think people needed time.
I want to clarify that I didn't share that view in December. And I think you maybe you, you might have suggested that we all had that opinion and, and I didn't share that opinion. I was ready to, for the board to put it on as a binding referendum in December and I didn't feel like we were rushing it. Because this issue had been percolating for months in the village and the residents had tried to get it on and it had been knocked off on a, a technical issue. So I just, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Okay, fair, fair enough, Katie. But remember, people came to our board table asking it to be all, everyone, trustee and clerk. And that's not what you were agreeing to. You were agreeing to something different, which is fine. But that's what the residents were trying to.
I, I don't think you can say that, Kathy. I, I, I agreed to either one. I agreed to put either one on the ballot at that point in December.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I just don't, fair enough.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I think, I want to make clear for me and for the rest of the board and for residents, when we talk about the process that was involved with the village clerk and him approving the referendum to go on the ballot and not making a decision whether it was binding or advisory. My understanding is the legal advice from our village legal team was a electronic form that did not offer up the opportunity to note whether it was advisory or binding. Can we, can you speak to that?
Yeah, the form is the. The form is the county's form. And the, the clerk was, was, did not certify it as being one or the other. The, the clerk sent it into the county as it was.
So did our legal team not provide an opportunity for binding or advisory question then? Or how, how to proceed so that we could have?
The county did not, and the clerk did not want to expound on it one way or the other. But the county form did not require a box to be checked as a binding or advisory. There was no.
But better yet, I thought Lance, you, you put the petition sheet attached to it, right? So the petition sheet was, what should have shown the county clerk what it was? And I think that's what was the issue.
I think the county clerk though, doesn't make a determination one way or another.
Exactly.
Right.
And it has, the packet had on the front page, binding, right? And so there were plenty of, the front of the page had it binding. The top of the petition said binding.
Can I make just a point here about the, this discussion? This is really, I mean, it's, it's irrelevant because this is what, these are things that the parties, if there were to ever be a challenge, things they would bring up and discuss. They would discuss, oh, it should be binding because the word binding was on the cover. It should be advisory because the signature sheets had advisory on them. There was waiver. These are all arguments, but just as I can't give you like the end result, but your discussion can't come to that and your vote can't change it. And I'm just saying that to try to be helpful.
I, I'm also just wanting to make sure that we understand what the process was and whether there was an opportunity for the clerk to make a suggestion, whether it was, or a determination, whether it was binding or advisory based on the legal advice.
No. The clerk, the clerk was told he had the authority not to certify it because of the confusion, but he could not like change it.
But he could certify it and was not given an opportunity to certify it as binding or advisory.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that.
How would he have been able to do that then?
He, he couldn't. He could send it, he, he can, if he, to not send it to the county would have required him to advise that he wasn't sending it in, he was not sending it in, not certifying it, or he could send it in. But by sending it in, he wasn't, he had no authority to make it one or the other.
So, but, but you're saying that he didn't list one or the other?
Yeah, right. There was no place for him on the form sending it in to do that. He just sent it in. And I don't think he wanted to make a decision, really. He wanted to kind of.
Well, I don't know about that, yeah.
Well, I, I know that we received a timeline from the village clerk before he left office. And it seemed to me pretty clear in his timeline that he was looking for the correct form that allowed him to designate it as advisory or binding. And he was given a link to a form from your colleague, from, no, from your, your partner. And when, when the clerk saw that the link, the form at the link that he was provided did not allow him to designate it as either advisory or binding, he went back to your partner and say, and said, hey, the link that you gave me doesn't allow me to, to designate that. And, and your partner said, well, that's the link. And so use that link. And he did. And then I think he followed up with your partner, who then said, expect to get a call back from the county asking you if you mean to designate it as binding or advisory. And he checked in with our village staff saying, you know, I expect a call from the county. Please, you know, let me know when the call comes in. And he let the village board know that situation also. So he clearly had been under the impression that he was supposed to designate it as binding or advisory and he had the ability to do that. But then the form he was provided didn't let him do it.
Correct. So keep in mind, we were talking about past precedent and cases and, and this is, this was a case of first impression in this area. And so I think Scott Euler, who does tons of election work, thought that this may be raised by the county itself or the county form might, might refer to it. But it doesn't, doesn't. And there, and there was no call from the county.
So Lance, what other people, when there's a referendum and, and the clerk certifies it, it attaches the petition to it. And what the county clerk sees is the petition.
Yes.
And it says either binding or it says advisory, clearly. And, and, right. And so it's something that we use at, at the village board or kind of to determine that, I guess, is the question. I mean, so that's what I, I kind of see it as, is I think what Scott was advising the clerk was that it was confusing. It was pretty clear in his memo.
Correct. The safest course here would have been for the clerk not to send it in, not to certify it. And that would have forced the issue one way or the other. That was the advice he was giving.
Right.
But he has the authority to certify and be able to designate it as binding or advisory, be able to give that to the county clerk. And it sounds like the form that he was provided didn't allow for that.
No, it, it did. You, it, it, no, the form, you attach the petitions to it. That's what considers whether something's binding or advisory. And it was confusing. I think that's what Scott Euler said to John.
I don't know, I'm looking at John's timeline right now. And he says, he, he writes that on January 9th, he had a call with Mr. Euler. He was told he was to evaluate the petition on the face of the document alone. The three paths he could choose were one, sanction the petition as advisory, two, sanction the petition as binding, or three, disqualify the petition as non-conforming.
That's correct.
Three choices.
Three choices. You chose none of them.
I think he wasn't given the opportunity in the.
Again, we, the only thing you could do is provide the petition. I mean, Lance, tell me, I mean, am I wrong?
There was, there was a lot, there was, there was a lot of tension. I mean, the, the clerk could have written a cover letter to the county providing it and, and saying what his opinion was. I don't know what, what that would have done. But in the end, all he wanted to do was just send it in and use the form. And the form did not have a box to check one or the other. So he simply sent it in. And my understanding from my discussions with Scott is that's what John wanted to do. He did not want to take a position on it one way or the other.
I'm looking at the timeline again. And on January 15th, John writes, upon review of the link with the form to submit the referendum, I noticed that identifying the referendum as binding or advisory was not part of the form. I sent an email to Mr. Euler explaining my confusion. And he replied in the following manner. You do not have to note the question as binding or advisory. You include a copy of the petition sheet along with a certification form and the question. And the county clerk reads the petition. Here it will be, it says interested, but I think he means to say interesting, what they conclude, or as I think may happen, they will ask you to designate whether the question is binding or advisory. So based on that, I can't really agree that John really just wanted to send it in. He was really looking for the ability, I, I read this to say he was looking, he was looking for the ability to designate it.
And I agree with it.
And, and, and again, I, I don't know where this all gets us, but, but I, you know, what I know is what Scott told me, which is he really didn't want to take a position on it.
And, and I, I agree with you, Katie. I, I think he, but, but the truth of the matter was, is the petition said it all. And that's what was the struggling part of it, I think. Because that would made the decision right there. And I think Scott gave that advice and counsel to him. It's confusing and therefore should be not sent in at all, but. All right, so what other questions? Res, do you have anything? I'm, I'm hoping you can hear all this.
I'm hearing a couple of things that I think I'm not trying to belabor this any further, but trying to get clarification. So it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong Lance, is that you were telling us that if, first of all, the petition wasn't as clear because there was binding language on it, there was advisory language on it. And so it wasn't very clear whether it could be one or the other and it could be challenged for that in that respect. The other thing I recall you were saying is that if it ended up being an advisory referendum, we could not, meaning the board could not pass a referendum unless it was a binding referendum. Meaning we couldn't pass an ordinance unless it was a binding referendum because only the people on the binding referendum can change the form of government.
Right, although, although again, to nuance it, you're free to pass an ordinance. I mean, there's nothing inherently, but, but it, but it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change the ultimate enforceability of barring a third term from someone.
And Res, what I'm saying.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, I understand what you're saying Lance, but that's giving false hope. So that's like saying, we can pass an ordinance that's going to change the form, the federal government on just term limits for them. Is it going to pass? Is it going to be legitimate? No, it's not. We could pass it, but it's not. And so I want to get real on. And so I want to get real on what what we can do at the side, whatever. I mean, the way I look at this, and I'm hearing everybody, and I agree, I don't want to go through unnecessary litigation with this. So even when I was serving on the electoral board this last time, when the the confusion with the language, et cetera, and it ended up being that one of the things we focused on when we made the decision was that the confusion might end up with unnecessary litigation. And that was one of the things we looked at. If this is going to lead in that direction, I'm always, that's why I'm looking at at you to see. I understand what it is, what you're saying. But when you're saying, oh, you can pass any ordinance, it's if it's going to be, if you think, or I'm going to put you on the spot, if it's determined to be an advisory position, can we, if we pass an ordinance, can it be appellate, just because we pass it?
Not just because you pass it. But the reason I I answer the question you can is because it had been stated here that we were, I was sort of advising you, I don't even have the authority to pass the or an ordinance. And you do. I mean, a good example is the managerial form of government, that a lot of municipalities pass ordinances creating a manager form of government, where the manager is in charge of hiring the department heads. They pass an ordinance. Now, to really do that and have it be binding across the board, you have to you have to run a binding referendum. But municipalities don't. And then they operate that way. Now, I mean, many have run referendum that are binding, but some don't. They operate that way. The problem is, when you get a village president that gets in and doesn't want to operate that way, that village president isn't bound by that if unless there was a binding referendum. And there is case law to support that. Because, you know, it was how you were operating. You passed the ordinance, but you don't have the authority to take away powers from one office as a board. Only a referendum could do that.
And I guess what I'm saying is the statute that was added in 2016 does allow for that plainly. And I disagree with your.
Fair enough. But I I definitely don't agree with it. Yeah.
And I guess what I was going to finish saying, then, if that's the case, I don't want to pass something that's going to be questionable unless it's definite. I heard what people want in terms of the petition. So I'm in favor of of moving forward, but I want to do it correctly. I don't want to just pass an ordinance unless it's fixed. And frankly, if we have time to fix it, I'd rather fix it. And, you know, that's all I'm saying. And I understand what I heard from people who've said before and repeated again from the residents who are in the room, is that go ahead, quit wasting time and pass what you currently have. I also heard that it's binding already. So if it is, and we don't have to do anything, and Lance, I thought I heard you say it is, then I'm not sure why this question is before of before us if it's already binding.
I I don't think I said ever that I thought it was binding. I think what I said is, if it was a binding referendum, it is it is operable without any further action by the village board codifying it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that clarification because I'm I probably misunderstood, but it almost sounded like it's binding. You don't have to do anything. So so I'm glad you're clarifying that. So so then I'm going back to where I'd like to fix it. And people want the limit. I'm saying, let's keep the language that the petition is filed in that petition, and then just fix it, and let's produce it and 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 put on one of the upcoming ballots and get it fixed. I'm sure people are not very happy listening to this, but I want to avoid further litigation on this, no matter what, wherever it's coming from, and then just fix it. This petition, even if we act on it now, wouldn't take effect until the April election in 2027. So we have opportunities to put on a ballot and fix it and do it right. So that's where I'm thinking today of where we'd go on this one.
So our board has, we pass ordinances, and sometimes we also pass resolutions. And what I'm wondering is if we should consider be considering passing a resolution for term limits, and that in conjunction with however the referendum that the residents voted for and passed is perceived in the future, will guide our village and will guide our candidates and our voters in the future. The candidates know what the residents want from the result of the referendum question, and they'll know if we pass a resolution as well. If we have candidates that choose to try to stay on for an extra term, you know, that will be going against what the residents voted for and what a resolution that we might pass at this board would also state.
So you could do that by ordinance too, but it does, you know, so they're virtually the same. There are certain ordinances are more formal. In certain instances, they're required, like if you're disposing of property, paying bills and so forth, you know, budgets have to be passed by ordinance. But for most things, you could, you can take action by motion, by resolution, or by ordinance. But if you're what you're saying, trustee Brennan is if to to create a policy where the majority of the board acknowledges or the board acknowledges that this referendum was run, there there may be some lack of clarity about its ultimate enforceability, but it is it is the the acknowledgement of the board that that it that the desire of the this vote was four term limits, and it's the policy of the village under this resolution that candidates should limit themselves to two terms. Is that what you're suggesting? You can do that.
That's what I'm thinking about right now.
I think it's the same thing that we've been talking about.
Hmm.
Same thing as ordinance, codifying. Well, okay. I mean, for me, it is. I mean, I don't. I don't think I would want to pass again to what trustee Vasquez says. I mean, we knowingly know that there's an issue here.
Passing a resolution is a policy. It's not a law.
But it's the same difference.
It can be. Like, if you use a resolution to approve a contract, it's binding. So it's really more what it does. The one thing you might want to consider is, I don't know that a codifier, well, you could put a resolution as a in the appendix of your codified ordinances. You it could appear there. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to acknowledge that I don't think there is anything to fix here. I think in general, I do agree that was binding, especially if if there was no place for it to be listed as binding, that it should just automatically be considered that. So and I I think that we are in our right to pass an ordinance, and that we should, that should be our next step.
I am going to respectfully disagree because we're having a very long conversation about this issue. And the more that we talk about it, the more that in terms of the lack of clarity on intent becomes kind of our reality. Maybe it wasn't what we all, you know, what was desired, but now we're in a position that to eliminate lack of clarity and to ensure that we're setting our village up in the future for success, I would concur with trustee Vasquez that let's do it as a binding referendum, clearly binding, put it on the ballot in the future, and then we can put this enacted with confidence, you know, aligned with the law, the municipal code, et cetera. Thanks.
And I should I should add that I do think that that position is aligned with the law that we can put in place an ordinance according to 3.1 dash 10 dash 17.
Anybody else? Any comments? All right. Well, I think what we were hoping to do is get direction. I think we're kind of a bit little over. I'm not a hundred percent heard from Bob or Megan.
No, I mean, I think, you know, I I kind of go to the legal challenge piece of this, as as Res said, is, you know, I I brought this up before, that we need to take our time and do stuff, and I'm going to bring it up again, that we need to take our time and do stuff and do it right and make sure it's clear. And this just still doesn't seem clear to me.
Going back out to the ballot box, will be the third time this has come through. We're doing it a third time. And it's it's a little frustrating to me. I'd like to know, I think, from a legal standpoint, where it says that term limits change the form of government, that we can't do it via ordinance, that this section of code that Erica is referencing is wrong and doesn't doesn't apply. So I'd like to know that information before moving forward. But this feels like a problem to me that we could have addressed already. We haven't done it. I'd like to move forward with respect to what the voters have voted for. They voted me in that election. I can't tell them that they have not voted and that they didn't understand what they were voting for. I think they did. So I I think we should move forward with an ordinance.
So if I moved for a vote on on the board enacting an ordinance for term limits, could we vote on that right now?
Yeah, a motion. It would be a motion to provide direction to draft an ordinance. I mean, you can't approve the ordinance because it's not in front of you, but you can do a motion to provide direction to adopt an ordinance treating term limits as having been established by the local election held April 1, 2025. That'd be sufficient.
I'm going to so move.
Well, hold on. Lance, can we do that? It's it's not on the agenda as a motion.
Yeah.
Well, this is a.
We would bring the.
This is on the agenda, Res, and it's also a regular meeting, and it's not final action. The final action would be the vote on the drafted ordinance. This would simply simply be providing direction.
Well, why don't we just provide the direction? I don't think we have to take a vote, is what I'm saying. In the past, we've only agreed to provide direction with no motion. Because I I don't know. That's not been my experience with the
I think just because we haven't done it in the past doesn't mean.
We can do it, and it can lose, or we can give direction to our village administrator and come back and have another discussion quickly about what the what the vote should be. So I mean, I I personally, you've heard me say it, I agree with Megan. I mean, and I've said it at the Wednesday Journal, and thank you, Patty, for, we've heard the voters. Now, we want to get it right. And we want to say, if this was advisory, because we know it's not binding, then you advised us on this issue, and we understood that, and we heard you. So now, just like Tinley Parked it, we're going to put it on the next, on I think we should put it on the November, because that's that's when voters actually come out in the general election. And that's what we want. We want everybody to vote on this issue, not just a small amount of people. And I think you shouldn't be afraid of it. This is something we should be happy about. So I'm I'm not afraid of it because, you know, there's it's already been out there, and it's already been discussed. So I think we got to get it right. That's what everyone's asking us to do. We wanted to do it in December. Megan, you're totally right. We didn't get it for a variety of reasons. Don't know why. We should have done it. We should have got it right and and had something. The following year, we could have still put it down.
Yeah. So has Katie made a motion? I did. I made a motion.
You can make a motion now. Go ahead.
Trustee Brennan, can you reiterate that motion for understanding?
I'm going to ask for attorney Molina's assistance in reiterating the exact language of the motion.
Well, I don't know that I can do that, but I can get the substance 100%. So the motion would be to 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 direct staff to prepare an ordinance that acknowledges the term that term limits were affected, effected, E F F E C T E D, by the local election held April 1, 2025. And by using the word affected, it's binding by saying that.
I saw move.
No, no, no. See, it's going to get very confusing. This is not binding. Okay, with the motion that Katie wants to do is to enact the an ordinance, basically codifying the referendum.
You'd have to vote on it. That's right.
We will vote on something that is created from the staff.
You can vote on it now. You can vote on it later.
No, we have to. No.
No, the.
No, you can vote on it. No, meaning if it goes no, then we're not going to do it.
Oh, I understand.
And and and, Res, I I respect the past practice, but there's nothing illicit about doing it this way. And in fact, since it appears to be kind of a divided issue, it might make it easier to keep track of where everyone's hand is.
Second.
I I appreciate what you're saying. I'm not saying past practice. I'm saying, the AG's office has always told me that when we have something on the agenda and it's no action, putting a vote on the agenda or an approval of something without being on the agenda is in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's right.
I respect your opinion. And I'm not going to say anything more on this, but but I'm just explaining where I'm coming from. Regardless of what position people are taking, we already have one Open Meeting Act violation that's pending. I just don't want another one.
Yeah. And and what I would say, Res, to to make it easier for you to sleep tonight, is it wouldn't be considered final action. No trustee that votes to direct this ordinance is bound to vote to adopt it. It's non-final action. It's simply direction that's being provided by a vote rather than a show of hands.
And I want to make sure we're all clear what the motion is, is to codify, basically give direction to Matt to come back to the board with a ordinance that codifies the referendum that passed.
Treats it as binding.
Treats it as binding. Okay. So just so you know, a yes vote means I will treat.
First referendum.
Listen, if a yes vote means I agree it was binding, we'll treat it as binding. A no vote means it's not binding, and we can't treat it.
No, that's not what I'm hearing. So correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing, what she's asking for is direction
Right.
for the staff to create an ordinance.
Right.
Okay, that will clearly codify that it is binding. There's no, it takes.
That's correct. And I'm saying, if you say no, if.
If I say no, then he's not going to do any work.
Right. And if you, right, on this issue, on this issue.
Matt had a suggestion that I think may be.
So we can have another motion that says, I want him to direct him to actually prepare a resolution or an ordinance that will set it in the future.
Okay, that's pretty much what I.
Yeah.
Lance, what were you saying?
Oh, Matt leaned over and said, maybe if we we were directed to prepare an ordinance that treated the referendum as binding, but also a resolution consistent with your other suggestion, and bring them both forward.
In fact, both of them. That have been kind of expressed tonight, we could also consider a third option of preparing that type of standard operating procedure.
Are you saying they would both happen?
No.
I want to do one at a time.
Well, you'd vote on them one at a time, and you could decide what order you.
You're asking. The second one is.
They both could be prepared and brought forward to the village board.
No, well, we can do it tonight. Let's do it one at a time. I agree with you.
I see.
So make sure that everyone understands, because I I don't want anybody to be confused. So the first motion, and it appeared that Erica seconded it, was to codify the referendum to be considered binding. Okay, the second motion, that if someone wants to move in second, would be after this vote, would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that allows us to put a binding referendum on a future ballot. Perhaps you could even say a date, whether it's going to be March or November election. Okay?
I'm requesting that we just vote one at a time, because I think when you you're making it confusing.
No, no, I don't want to vote it together. I'm I'm just saying.
So let's just, let's take the first vote.
I'm saying it's two things. Is that clear? You look confused. So I want to make sure we're clear before we.
Basically, so we are voting on whether and providing direction, but assuming that we believe that it was binding versus advisory.
So, yeah, so Lisa, if you believe it was binding, you vote yes. If you believe it was not binding, you vote no. Okay, the second motion, it will be get moved in second, would be, right, would be a motion to create an ordinance for a future binding referendum that could happen in either the March election, November election.
So the the motion on the floor right now. So the, the motion on the floor right now is to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that treats the April 1st election as if it were binding. Now, a affirmative vote by any members here does not mean that that will go into place. We will bring that forward back on October 27th vote, and if you were to vote yes, that, to direct staff, I bring that back as an ordinance, a staff member or a trustee could vote no. There's also been discussion of an additional motion that can take place after, where direction can be given to staff to prepare a resolution placing a clearly binding referendum on a future ballot, of which a vote taken here tonight does not bind you to a future vote on either topic.
That's correct, but we're asking you to do a lot of work. And so by voting on this, saying if you vote yes, then, and it gets the majority of the vote, then you go do the work. If it says no, if you vote no, it then says, don't go do that work. All right? All right?
Correct.
I want to make sure everyone understands. I think it's real important we get clarity.
One thing at a time.
Yeah.
And it's not a lot of work. The language is right there.
Yeah, but I mean, why have them go do something when it might go down? Okay, go ahead. So what, we'll, so the motion is to codify, go ahead, did you write that down?
I tried. I tried. I don't know if I know it all, but.
Okay, so this is to, for the ordinance to treat the, it's for the staff to create an ordinance to treat the referendum as binding. Did I get that right?
April 1st, 2025 referendum, yes.
The April 1st, 2025 referendum.
Right.
Okay. Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Kaskatello?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
For a couple of reasons, and I mentioned them already.
Did you say no? We didn't hear you.
Yes, you did.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
I said no.
Thank you. Trustee Gillis?
I have to go no as well. My position, I think it's clear what the voters wanted, and I think we want to do what is right by the voters. It is not clear if the petition was binding or advisory, so I cannot vote for it to be binding when I don't know what it is.
Trustee O'Connell?
No.
So it's tied, so you got to call me.
President, President Adusi?
No, we've talked about this a hundred times. Let's get it right. Let's get it right. The voters want it right. We've heard the people say voters want it. Let's ask them. So then let's put, so that's a no, right? Failed. So now the next motion is to direct staff to create a binding referendum to be placed.
To create a resolution that places a binding referendum on a future ballot.
Yeah.
And we could be specific about the date or not.
We could be specific, but we could talk about that.
I'd like to talk about the exact ballot, because I would, if, if this is the way that the board goes, I would like this to be on the next available ballot. And my understanding. It's March. Is that.
It's a March primary, so.
That next ballot is March 17, the general primary, and that would give December 29th of this year as the last day for us to adopt a resolution to put it on there.
Right. And then what is the November one?
The gen, the general gubernatorial election is November 3rd, 2026, and the deadline for that would be August 17th of 2026.
And what would you say the turnout on the primary versus the general?
Tell you what the turnout is.
Oh, okay.
So in the April election, we had 21% of our voters in April of, I'm sorry, 28% in April of '25. April of '23, we had 21%. June, we had a gubernatorial primary. June of '22, we had 22%. In the November election, we had 59%.
I don't think it's appropriate to talk about the, the percentage of people who showed up. When we have an election, we have an election, and people show up and vote.
Perspective.
And, I mean, there are people at this table who have been elected by a smaller, a smaller margin than the number of people who elected, who voted for this referendum. I don't think it's appropriate to talk about the percentage of residents who vote. We have it out there.
If we want to engage the population, yeah, it is important to talk about it.
Well, then look at what this primary will be. We will have Danny Davis's seat up for primary. That's going to be a very interesting and popular vote. I would say, put it on that one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it can be, but the general always drives more voters across the board.
Much farther away.
Yep. But it doesn't, Megan, I agree with you, but it doesn't change the term of the language.
When this is going to be enacted.
It will enact the 2027 and 2020.
It's, it's not that it changes the term when it's enacted. It changes the fact that it's drawn out for the community, and they've already felt like it's drawn out.
I mean, if the voters, I'm going to assume that regardless of whether it's March or November, I mean, people are going to, if you want it, they're going to campaign for it. If they don't want it, they're going to campaign against it. I mean, it's going to happen either way. I just think you want more voters to turn up. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
And I don't think that you can know how many voters are going to turn up, and I don't think it's a good service to our residents to postpone this vote.
I think it's a great service because we're getting more voters. I think.
You don't know.
A referendum, you want more voters, I think. All right, so, I mean, we can wait on that and debate that later. We could put this November in there, whatever you all want, but we want to take a vote on this.
So, so it could be drafted and the date put in when the final vote is taken. We don't have to continue it again if that's, you know, you can make the final decision when the vote is.
Yeah, when we take the vote.
Which election, I mean.
On the day. I mean, we don't have to debate it tonight. I agree, but.
Are you just saying, kick, decide the date of which, which ballot to put it on later? Is that what you're saying?
You can, you can.
We actually vote for it.
I want to hear what Lisa's saying.
Yeah, okay, when we vote for it.
You can hold it in abeyance and not delay it again. You can decide that night, and it'll be final.
Yeah.
If you know what you're voting for in the motion.
And Matt, our options are March.
March 2, 26, November 26, and April 1st, 27.
I got it.
And, and, and I think that that, even at that late date, that would still qualify because the certification of the ballot would take place before any elected official is sworn in. So I think it's final, and it doesn't retroactively apply.
So we could put it tonight, or we can hold off until they write it, and then we can enter it in that night. So it doesn't matter. Again, I, I highly recommend we get as mo, most voters out. That's what we want.
Yeah, I don't think, to reiterate, trustee Brennan, I, I don't think that we can tell considering, I think the November one was probably a presidential election, if I'm understanding correctly, but both are popular. I, I think it's frustrating to our residents to keep moving this back and back and back. So I would be an advocate for having it at the next election possible, if we are going to do this.
But we'll, we'll keep it blank right, and then we can debate that, unless you guys want to.
I guess I would rather, I would move that we, that we put this on as a binding referendum question on the next possible ballot, which is March 17th, 2026.
Now, if, if it fails, again, I mean, why would we, here, I mean, we could have had one, do it November. I mean.
I'm not clear what you're saying.
I'm, I'm just saying, we could put a date in. I've, I've offered to leave it blank so that we can have more debate around it, but if you want, then we'll go around, and then we'll have a second round, and that's fine. So Katie's recommending we put March primary on it. Okay, there's been my discussion, and it's up to you guys, but I think you want more voters, and I say November election is the same. You get a lot more voters out, and they're more engaged, and that's what we want. We want engaged voters. I don't know why we want less voters. It doesn't make any sense to me, so, but.
And I don't think you have any certainty about what you just said.
I have a ton of certainty. The numbers don't lie.
Well, but they're different facts. That was a presidential election.
But no, the gubernatorial election, you can go back, 2022, 2022, whenever Pritzker ran again. I mean, they're, they're just higher numbers.
I, I think it's better for the residents to, if this is going to go back as a referendum question, I think they would like to have this addressed and handled as soon as possible.
So you're saying 21% of the people would like to handle versus 56 or?
That's not what I'm saying, Kathy.
Well, you learn. You're basically saying, don't let, don't.
No, please don't mischaracterize what I'm saying.
Okay, well, then, you just said it's irrelevant, and they're, they're not irrelevant. So what do you guys want to do? I just want to make sure we got consensus. Do you want to put a date in there, or you want to leave it blank, or we want to put a March primary, or we want to put a November?
Did you already make a motion? I did make a motion. Second.
Okay. All right, so this is for the March primary.
Right.
We can, if it's a yes vote, it's going to be March. If it's a no vote, we could vote on it again to make it November, or we can have another motion?
And it's the same two terms that were in the original.
Oh, yeah, same two terms. We're not changing any of the language.
Yes.
All right, I'm just stating it.
Yeah, thank you.
Does everyone understand? I just want to make sure. Okay, a yes vote would say it's in March, no vote, no.
We're also, yes vote also for directing the staff to create a resolution in place for a binding referendum, and now we're adding the actual date for the, for the election that we're considering.
Of March.
Correct.
And, but, Res, so you're clear. If it's a no, we can, anybody can do another motion.
Hey, hang on. I, I think, I think, hang on, Res. Res, I think we have, I think we're, but I think we're going to confuse it now, because what, what we're going to do is, we're going to vote on having a binding referendum, and if we put a date on it, and we don't like the date, then the whole thing gets thrown out, and we have to start over again. Right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Again, we're going to rush through this.
That's right.
Okay.
You feel rushed about that?
No.
How are you so rushed about that?
No, you can't.
Because now what you're, you're, you're pinning.
No.
You're pinning me in a corner, okay?
Yeah, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on.
If I want to do a binding referendum, I'm good with that. If I don't want to do it in March, I'm going to vote no.
That's your, that's your prerogative.
Then we can.
Yeah, that's your prerogative.
Yeah, then we can have another motion to do it in, in November. Okay, right after. So, Res, go ahead.
I was, as an alternative, I was going to suggest, do you want to just vote on creating the resolution in place of binding referendum, number one, and then do the third vote on what date that is? And so at least what I was trying to address is the concern that Bob raised, which is, how many people are really on the board willing to direct on the binding referendum? That'd be very clear. And then we do a motion on when or what election it would, it would take place.
I think the motion's already on the test.
No, I understand, I understand, but if we go ahead, then we'll vote on that. But then, Bob, we'll take another motion.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Vote on November.
Put it, the same motion, but.
So ridiculous. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I was just trying to make it easy.
Yeah, I know, Res, and I appreciate it. I really, I think that would be the nicest, kindest one, but, okay. So we got a motion. Do you have that?
Yep. This is a, a motion to direct the staff to prepare a resolution to create a binding referendum for the March 17th, 2026 ballot. Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Kaskatello?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
No.
Trustee Gillis?
No.
Trustee O'Connell?
No.
President Adusi?
No. We need voters.
To make a motion to ask, to direct the staff to create a ordinance, putting a binding referendum on the November 2026 general election.
General election, November, right?
Ballot, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Do we have an exact date for the November?
That's November 3rd.
We don't need it right now, but it's November 3rd.
All right, so this is.
And Res seconded it, didn't he?
Oh, did he?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so this is to direct the staff to prepare a resolution to create a binding referendum for the November 3rd, 2026 ballot. Trustee Bachner?
Considering that this board has opted not to do this in the quickest possible fashion and put this on the March ballot, I'm voting yes.
Yes, yes. Trustee Brennan?
I'll vote yes with the same comment.
Trustee Kaskatello?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
You're muted.
Res?
Res.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Great. I knew we would get consensus. Just a matter of getting there. So, all right, so that's the direction to the staff, and then we'll come back the 27th with the, the final vote on this. So I think that ends our meeting, so motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay.
Trustee Bachner, second.
Yep.
Okay. Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Kaskatello?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.